Restated wireless telecommunications.
Yeah, you and me both.
All right, I'm gonna call the October thirteenth meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. First up, we have an announcement. I mentioned to our county attorney Chester Jones when I walked in that, I guess after all these years, he finally found the meeting that he'd been looking for. And that's the last one to say. Chester, Macon County has been honored and blessed to have you serve us. You serve with dignity and pride, and you've been a true mentor for me. You've led me and guided me from an educational and nonbiased perspective, and I can't honestly thank you enough. I'm about to shed tears because I don't want to see you go. You've been great for Macon County and I wish you could serve longer, but I definitely understand, so thank you. I'm sure the rest of y'all would like to.
I wish you the best in your retirement. You got motor, stewardess, motorcycle, camper. Enjoy it, brother. You've earned it. Thank you for your service.
Howard, I just echo what's already been said. I think Chester's been a steady hand. Chester's been, has had the demeanor to say some things that needed to be said that potentially nobody wanted to hear. And be able to do that without upsetting Apple Card. That's not everybody can do that. Thank you, Chester.
Thank you. Well, I certainly appreciate Chester and what he's meant to this board, but there's one other person we need to thank too. And her name's Susan. Of course, not only is that Chester's wife, but she works for Chester, and she's been loyal too and worked very hard. And I was privileged to be here when Chester come. I hate to see him go, that's for sure. But you're appreciated, Chester. You kept us all out of jail so far.
Chester, I want to say thank you as a person that now I have another friend and I consider you one. Thank you.
Just like to echo what everybody said. Chester and I have worked closely together for seven years. I joke around and told him the other day that we talked more on the phone during the day than me and my wife did. But no, I tell you, he is, he's a great attorney, but more importantly, he's a great man. His standards ethically that he sets for himself are unparalleled to anyone I've ever working with, that I've ever worked with. I know that he's, he's had a great impact on this organization, great impact on me as both a person and a manager. And I'd just like to thank him for investing his time and effort into this organization. And, you know, there's a lot of things we accomplished that we wouldn't be able to sit here today without Chester Jones. And I just, I thank him, I thank Susan. From the bottom of my heart, there's not a more first-class, not a more first-class individual. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience? Sheriff?
I'd just like to say that we appreciate you, Chester. I've worked with you for my entire career, twenty-eight years as a county attorney and as a DSS attorney. And there's one thing that you could always say, we had this joke that we used to always say, we Chester, get it Chesterized as long as it went through Chester. And it met all the stuff and the criteria that he thought it needed to meet. At the end, you can guarantee, you can count on it. It's always been appreciated. It's frustrating at times, but we very much appreciate it. We're gonna miss you, and you're a longtime friend, and I wish you the best in your retirement, and we're all jealous of you.
Thank you, Ron. Chester, we have a little presentation for you, but I know we have a public hearing. I presume our county attorney would like to push us through this public hearing, and it'll take a few minutes to. All right, let's all rise, we'll observe a moment of silence, and I'll ask Mr. Jones to lead us in the pledge.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chester. We'll call the public hearing to order for the proposed, amended, and restated wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance. Mr. Allen, I presume you're gonna be giving us, or Jack, one of y'all gonna be giving us a quick update?
Okay.
Welcome, Joe. We need to welcome Jack back too.
Yes.
Good to see you, Mr. Morgan. Certainly glad you're back and this board and every member, I think I expect of them, Jack. You've been in our hearts and minds for a long time.
You don't know what Jack does for us until he's not here.
He's not there.
Thank you, Jack.
You don't know what he's gonna do until he's not here.
A few months back, this board asked the planning board to look into streamlining the process. If there's any possible way that we could make it a little bit easier for broadband towers to be put up in Macon County. And after a lot of hard work and a lot of debate and a lot of back and forth, the county, Macon County's planning board have come up with these recommendations that county attorney has drafted into ordinance form for this public hearing.
The jetta package contains a red line and strikeout version of the revised policy. I also have handed out a clean copy for your perusal as well. In a nutshell, what this does is it simplifies the process when the tower is gonna be used exclusively for broadband distribution purposes. And when the tower is between the height of fifty and a hundred and twenty-five feet, these would be shorter towers than the typical telecommunications towers that y'all deal with. And what it does, in a nutshell, is instead of the board of commissioners having a hearing on the application, it calls for administrative review and administrative approval or denial, as the case may be. It does provide for a mechanism if the applicant is unhappy with the administrator's decision to appeal that to the planning board. If they're unhappy with the planning board, then it can go to the superior courts or the county.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Joe, for the work.
Appreciate it.
Especially for CE. If you wanna read that, that's what we're struggling with right now. It's not putting the wealth, it's taking them down when they're not doing that. So.
I think that was a very important part to get in there. To find a way to get these things down when they're not being used.
Oh, yeah. They're not gonna be used.
I've got questions, somebody else has?
Go ahead, you may get out of here.
Okay.
Joe, it says that no wireless support structure shall exceed a hundred and seventy-five feet in height, so I presume you can build up to a hundred and seventy-five and not go over. Is that height based upon technology? Is it based upon, somebody just came up with it? What's the?
Hundred and twenty-five feet.
Hundred and seventy-five, it says.
That would be for your larger towers. This would not fall within that range. This particular exception or exemption only applies if the tower is a hundred, I'm sorry, between fifty and a hundred and twenty-five feet and used exclusively for broadband purposes. You're gonna find these structures are not big and bulky like the ones y'all are typically passing on. These are much smaller, they're engineered for a much lighter load.
Yep.
All right, so Chester, glad you're here. So help me explain to us. So 154.08, it says criteria for issuing a building permit for construction of a new wireless support structure or substantial modifications to an existing wireless support structure. This is on page nine, item A. It says no wireless support structure shall exceed a hundred and seventy-five feet in height.
Yeah, unfortunately, this ordinance is a lot like an insurance policy. It'll give you a term, a general term under the ordinance, and then in a later point in the policy, it takes it away. And that's essentially, that's essentially what you have here. Probably the best place for you to vote, Mr. Chairman, is to the big red part. If you, that talks about an exemption. And what it does is it says if those criteria set forth in that exemption apply, then these other provisions don't apply. It's essentially a carve-out for that particular type of technology.
So same question, hundred and twenty-five feet versus a hundred and seventy-five?
It's my understanding that's as far as you can go with these towers, and they'd be stable, engineering standard.
Okay, so it's an engineering?
They're tiny, I don't know, I think you guys have pictures in your packets.
Yeah, there's a picture of one of them.
They're not.
They're much smaller than a cell.
Yeah, they're much smaller than a cell tower. They do not have a footer, per se a footer, so they're not gonna be able to withstand being much higher than what they are, a hundred and five feet.
So it's the max it can go before?
Mm-hmm.
So the planning board apparently thought this would be an improvement and help us get broadband a little quicker, maybe, Joe?
I think so. I think that was the planning board's thinking that could cut some time off the approval process of these towers.
And I think too, I thought, I had the privilege of attending and listening to the discussions, and I thought it was, it's noteworthy that the school board, as well as the Economic Development Commission approved, or had, gave a letter to the planning board showing their unanimous support for these recommendations, as they recognize, you know, the impact that this issue that we're seeing firsthand today with the COVID-19 pandemic and many of our children learning virtually. You know, this was a way, I think, that was recognized not only by the EDC as the economic benefit, that broadband that we've many times discussed and originally was recommended by the broadband committee some time ago, but also it's now became clear the impact that it has on education. And I think that's why the school board expressed their support for what we were trying to do in streamlining this process through an administrative approval.
County manager mentioned two letters. Those are in your agenda package, and I would recommend that they be tendered to this board and included in the minutes of this public hearing. This is primarily the line of sight approach to broadband?
Yes. They do have some technology that can balance that, but primarily, yes, you're gonna have to be able to see how direct line of sight of the tower.
Do you know of any interest that's been expressed in that? I know surrounding counties are using this technology now, as I understand, maybe Jackson County?
Jackson County's using it right now. They have an exemption in their ordinance that's similar to what we're proposing. They've had it there for a few years. Our county planner says it's working well for them. To be perfectly honest with you, this technology is being used at my house off a tower from Jackson County. It works good, so.
All right, just a couple points that I want to mention. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the planning board unanimously approved the changes that were sent to Chester, and then the planning board, again unanimously approved the changes after Chester.
That's correct.
So they were unanimous in it. Couple points that I just want to bring up, and if we discuss it, fine, if we don't, that's perfectly fine as well. The, they're under, in Chester, make sure I'm staying straight on this, 15407A2G does not allow.
Page is it?
I don't have a clue.
One, I'm sorry, 150.
Page seven.
And that's, and we've already touched on it, talks about the, there's no verbiage in there for the allowance of 911, county 911 equipment to be placed on that tower.
Right.
There are numerous other counties that are using these type towers where 911 is on those towers.
Yeah, and I was sort of faced with a dilemma when I got the notes for the change from the planning board. It basically said that the only way this exemption was going to work is if the tower was going to be used exclusively for broadband purposes. And obviously, if we carve out and say we want 911 on it, we're just disqualified. That was my thinking, anyway.
That's a good thought, Joe. Do you think that the planning board would have any issues if we were to put something in there that would allow 911 to utilize the tower?
I do not. That was in the original notes, the original recommendations that were sent to Chester had that allowance in there.
It just doesn't coincide with the rest of the instructions that it be used exclusively for broadband.
But if they are being used for 911, it seems like that would be something that the county would want to do. In regards to.
Carl, before you go on there, Commissioner blessed me. I do think that this ordinance, Chester, correct me if I'm wrong, would not permit, would not prohibit them from allowing 911.
I think it would.
You think it would prohibit them?
If it's not broadband going up there, it's, I mean, you don't have any exemptions unless the tower is being used exclusively.
I think that A2G is what that is.
Yeah.
It's way out there.
Yeah.
Then.
I think the problem is, I think you back out of that when you look at the exemption. I think it said that provision doesn't apply. It's kinda like what I was telling, it's like an insurance policy. It gives you coverage here and then takes it away over here.
Under 15409, and I believe again, under 15414, it talks about setback being the top of the tower plus, what's the fall zone?
You got that one? The well, fall zone would be the height of the tower and then twenty-five feet from any property line. So whatever the height of the tower is, if we were closer than twenty-five feet to the property line, then we would have to back it up, but.
Nothing in 15409 was changed.
Wasn't there a reference to the setbacks in 15409 or not?
I thought I read that.
But my point with that is we could have a tower that would be that distance from the property line, and there's no mechanism, we've taken the mechanism out of the ordinance, or we've exempted it from this part of the ordinance, I guess is a way to say it.
I think you have a fall zone with this.
Not a fall zone, but we've taken out the notification of a neighbor and property owner. And I just bring that up because the view shed, thinking about Jimmy's neighborhood, the view shed is a very important thing. I agree with being able to speed the process up a hundred percent, but I would like to see some sort of notification, Commissioner Bill and I have talked about this early on, where those adjoining property owners would have an idea of what was going on prior to it going on. Talking out of both sides of my mouth, when we talked to folks in Jackson County, they hadn't had any issues with that, and one could argue they have just as much of view shed as they do.
Well, I think that.
But I do, I do have a concern with that. And then, the, Chester, correct me if I'm wrong, the way I read these changes, the ordinance does not require assigned lease for a tower that's gonna be used for broadband.
I think it does.
Okay.
I think it does. I think it require, it requires evidence of a leasehold or ownership. And that further requires a letter to be provided to the county and put on record so that it buys not only the current owner, but future owners as well.
Good deal. Last thing, the appeals process goes to the planning board and then the superior court.
Correct.
I just, I have a concern for the planning board. I don't know that would, should put the planning board in that position. They're already in that position with the subdivision ordinance, and sometimes those conversations get pretty uncomfortable, and it's a volunteer board, so I just bring those points up.
It's an uncomfortable thing for anybody that gets that job. The thinking behind it, right or wrong, was those folks probably have more familiarity with that ordinance than anybody else. That was the thinking.
Well, and also it was consistency, because like he said, that's how the subdivision ordinance is, that's how the high-impact land use ordinance, the planning board is also set up. We passed an ordinance some time ago, making the planning board also the board of adjustment. And so that's how all these land use ordinances are pretty much set up, so it was a consistency thing as well with going to the planning board.
Carl's not the only one that raised that question. That got raised at the, in the planning board meeting when they were looking it over, and we talked a little bit about, should it be the county commissioners? And my thinking is, is y'all got a, y'all got a thirty-thousand-foot knowledge base of everything, but my thought was, the planning board might possibly know the nuts and bolts of this ordinance better than y'all. That was my thinking.
Chester, will this make the planning board a quasi-judicial?
It will, for that purpose of those hearings.
For this period, just for that hearing?
Correct, only for that purpose.
And like I said, they are in other ordinances also a quasi, so they're in that capacity. And like, you know, mentioning the high-impact land use ordinance, as far as the notification to adjoining property owners, it was brought up, you know, in the high-impact land use ordinance, asphalt plants, explosive storage facilities, sawmills, chipmills, all of those things that are deemed high-impact land use ordinances, airstrips, they have an administrative approval process. They, that does not require notice to adjoining property owners, so.
What's the setbacks on those for the high impact?
It depends, it depends.
On the activity?
Some of it, some of it's two hundred, some a hundred and fifty, but, you know, which would, the hundred and fifty, the more, the less of impact the use, the lower the setback. But, you know, that was the feeling in trying to, you know, and the discussion was, you know, if somebody is approached and works out a deal with a company that they want to use their property to construct a tower, to assist with providing broadband, if that tower meets all of the administrative requirements that are laid out in this ordinance, then there's nothing that, there's no grounds that it can be denied on anyway. So, and furthermore, it is, you know, they just felt, again, a consistency thing. That is not required for the high-impact land use ordinance, and if we're not going to require a letter for an explosive storage facility, then that was the feeling, is why would you require a letter for a hundred-foot monopole? So that was kind of where, where that discussion was. And it, you know, they also, this is a living, like every ordinance, it's a living document. And we can go back and if this is in place, give it a trial run, see how it works. I mean, the thoughts of, the thought that was going into this is time is of the essence. These kids are in school now, these kids are having to do virtual learning now, and while it's not going to be perfect right out of the gate, it turns the water on, and it gives us a way to speed up this administrative, through this administrative approval process and bring broadband into this community and does that quickly. And so I think that's what we have to keep in mind, while it might not have every tweak, every, for instance, the EMS, emergency communications. I think if we get, if you get six months into this thing, and, you know, Warren looks at it and says, you know, there's some of these towers, you know, we really need some, you know, would really help us to be able to put equipment on there, something this board can come back and change in a minute. But what this does right now is it allows us to start providing broadband into these communities where it's never been needed more than it is needed right now.
Tower construction is a private, so it will all be privately funded?
It's private companies, yes. They'll pull a building permit, they'll have all the applicable permits, the engineering, it will meet the requirements of the ordinance for approval. And so it's, what has turned into a month's-long process has now turned into a days-long process.
So them allowing, if we permit it under an exclusive broadband, then we would have to negotiate with them for EMS or any additional services that we might glean out of these towers?
I think if, yeah, and again, I think if that's something that we get adopted, get it adopted, and we go through this thing, and that's brought to our attention, I think the board's certainly free to go back and revise that at that time. But more than anything, what this does is it allows these private companies that are in the broadband business through using these towers, it allows them to come in here and do business. It removes the red tape, it removes the, it makes, it brings consistency to, with all of, with all of the other land use ordinances, and puts that same game plan out there, and it's not only gonna help them do business, it's gonna help us, again, get broadband when there's never been a time that we needed it more.
So Joe, the minimum, the minimum setback from any property line would be a hundred and seventy-five feet, is that right? You use a hundred, is a hundred, no, you'd be a hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty feet.
So that's a.
So that's, uh, I mean, that's, that's the minimum.
That's the minimum, yes.
Unless it's a 100-foot tower.
Yeah, unless it's a 100-foot tower. It'd be the to, tower height plus 25 feet.
You said you were getting, beaming off of.
It's the Calway, they have one on the Jackson, Jackson County side of Calway ball.
And you're getting it?
Mm-hmm.
Can you see the tower?
I cannot. They're bouncing it from somebody else to my house.
And you've got good service.
Uh, no complaints. Glad to have it, uh, Commissioner Higdon. I'm glad to have. We don't, no, no other option where I live, kind of like where you live. I mean, there's no option, so.
Just private satellite.
Yep, that's it. But these, these towers are, they're not what we're used to seeing. I think the, the photos you guys have got tell that tale. They're not, they're not a cell tower. Uh, it's.
Joe, I was given to understand that they, they're not a cell tower. They don't have the strength.
That's it.
Won't hold the weight. And candidly, I don't know what the weight of like 911 equipment is. Is it smaller stuff?
But th- these towers, uh, there's one of those pictures that's from 1.2 miles away. Those pictures are from Jackson County too, where they've got some towers up. And you can see the cell tower. You cannot see this tower until you zoom in, this tower. The, the environmental impact that these towers have is not anywhere near the same as a monopole cell tower.
I think I read in that these also don't have to have a, have a warning light on them or no kind?
Uh, they're not.
150, 175.
I think that's, I think that's part of the reason for the height restriction on it, is to get it.
So.
Any further questions? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good ideas.
I have no one signed up to speak about this. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this matter? Anyone? Questions, Chester? Should I close the public hearing?
I think you can close the public hearing.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, uh, to approve the proposed amended and restated wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance as presented with the letters from the Board of Education, the Economic Development Commission.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Shields to approve as written.
Second.
I have a second, my Commissioner Bill. Any discussion? Carl, Paul, any?
Just appreciate y'all working on it. tedious process. Thank you.
Is that worth adding the 911 stuff? I mean, I know we just talked about this. Does it work? No?
No.
Everybody good with 25 feet? Commissioner Bill, you just opened your, your view up out of your front yard and removals of trees. Would you be happy with that going up right there?
No, I don't have. And Carl and I did, or Commissioner Michigan and I did have this conversation because it, uh, you know, the, the view is very important. But after going to Jackson County and looking at these, it's a totally different animal than what we just are dealing with on our capital. It's a totally different, uh, perspective. And, uh, I'm not saying that there won't be some, some bumps in this. It may be like the county manager said, there may be some changes we'll have to address. But, uh, you know, since, you know, and if we're going to do broadband, we're going to have to take the state's share. We know that. The state angle, so we're off and running.
Let me say one other thing.
Commissioner Shields, go ahead.
I have a question on you. Uh, there are people out there, Natahala, Aqual, uh, Calway, that are interested, uh, in what's going on here tonight. Uh, so that they can have access to a, uh, a tool that will help them. And, uh, I've been addressed by a number of people waiting for this to happen and what happened tonight.
Further comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Need to record to click that it was unanimous.
Unanimous, okay. Thank you, Chester.
Thank you.
All right, um, I don't have anyone signed up for, uh, public comment. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Hayden and Mr. Carter here want to present the board either a public comment period or an additions to the agenda requesting permission to use a sealed building for a gun show. And, and they're supporting documents, so.
Let's move it to, uh, let's put that on the agendas, uh. We'll, we'll add it under additions to agenda. Is that okay? Is that okay with you, gentlemen? Yeah, we'll just put you under new business. All right, so no public comment? Going once? Going twice? All right, additions to, to the agenda. We're going to obviously have that one. Let's put it as, uh, 11A minus.
We don't want to kick along around David and Dave today, so.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, other reports and presentations. I have a real short report from the RPO meeting with the DOT concerning some local road construction or the lack thereof, so.
We can put that at A. We can put that on 9A because we'll be removing, uh, 9A. So just make that the new 9A.
Okay.
And if we could also, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add item 11G to new business. And that is, um, a consideration of an appropriation out of the local CARES Act funding. It would be to the Macon County fairgrounds to, um, cover COVID-related expenses that we're now, um, having to incur at those facilities.
Okay. All right, we're also, um, uh, we're going to, I'm going to request a, uh, should not take us long, a very quick closed session to discuss a personnel issue. And let's move that into, uh, let's move that right after we finish reports and presentations.
And your recognition of Leo Council?
Well, we'll catch him. We'll embarrass him again.
Okay.
Also, that closed session, uh.
We're going to have another one at the end of, uh, at the end of the meeting.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, we need to add, uh, in connection with the lease of the Performing Arts Center for the alternate jury trial site, got a, uh, an actual alternate jury, uh, site plan from the Superior Court Judge, uh, in the clerk of court today. I have reviewed it. Uh, it's satisfactory, but they won't, your signature on it, Mr. Chairman. And before you can sign it, we need this board to approve it. So if we could add that.
A.
Uh, yes, I think would be fine.
Anything else? All right.
If we can add budget amendment number 94, I'll lay the copy at each of your desks.
Make that as aye.
No, just add it in with 12 feet. Budget amendments.
I'm with you.
Yeah, just add number 94 there, yes.
Number 94. Anything else? Everybody good? All right, we get a motion to approve the agenda. My Commissioner Higdon.
Thank you.
Say goodbye, Commissioner Shields. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Bill, you're up.
Okay, on the RPO, we did meet, uh, some of us was our in-person, some of us on the Zoom. Uh, here's the, here's the skinny on where the DOT has it on local roads. Uh, the bids came back on extending the road. What we know is from the intersection of Wide Horizon Drive to the intersection at South Lake School. Uh, that bid came in at a higher price than originally estimated of $9.5 million. Uh, so that, we have, we, we tried to keep it on the RPO plan. Uh, we did, we were successful for 2023 so far. Uh, as far as the state and the DOT, uh, they seen about a $2 billion decrease. Just remind everybody, we're one of now four states that the state take care of the DOT, has a state DOT, and the county don't have to assume no responsibility for roads. But, uh, we need to be very careful as we go forward. Uh, with this hit, not only in the gas tax, and that's where the most money comes from, is gas tax. And, uh, it's took about a $2 billion hit in the total budget. Uh, the bids are coming in now, the bids that are out there, for instance, Calway Mountain, the backside of Calway Mountain, that's just two examples. But the bids across, um, we, not only our district, but other divisions, uh, I've seen a $3 billion increase in not only in existing work, but entire work. What really hurts us is on secondary roads. We have asked and, and, uh, we, we wrote letters and they give, and they have changed the process somewhat. Uh, but not many people realize how many miles of secondary road we have. We do the driving every day and the, and the damage and what's coming down the pipe. And so, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would just encourage the folks, they need to keep a close watch on, uh, the folks in Raleigh, if they decide to bring us a proposal to the counties, put us in the road business. We don't want the road business.
Definitely don't.
Uh, but with the deficit that we're facing and, uh, and especially in rural communities, uh, these federal highway funds, Interstate 40, 77 and all that, that's a different. When you get on some of these secondary roads, Mr. Chairman, but, uh, but they are proceeding with the, on some of the work in our county. Uh, and it was already approved, so, but I don't think we'll be seeing the second high, but probably one of the most dangerous sections in our county. And that's, uh, on 441 North and South. They will finish the first section, the wide horizon, that's already been approved. But the second section, we just keep, we just have to keep pushing against it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, item 9B, Tourism and Development Commission budget presentation. Linda Harbuck, welcome.
Thank you. How are you going to introduce something?
Yeah, as Linda's coming up, I'll just, uh, give you a brief summary. As you all, uh, recall, we're, this board approves the, the budget for the TDC in the upcoming year. And as all of our budgets have, uh, we've saw this year with the impact of COVID-19, uh, Ms. Harbuck and, and the Tourism Development Commission have made some changes to their budget. And those changes have been included in your agenda packet. And this is reflective of the budget we'll be considering tonight. Now, you do not have the original budget, but essentially what has happened is, uh, Ms. Harbuck has had to reduce her income from lodging tax proceeds. Uh, she reduced it by about $50,000. So at the same time, she was able to raise, uh, the revenue that is contained in the beginning balance to offset that. She was able to raise that by about $78,000. And that is because as time has passed and she has received actual, uh, the actual revenue information from months like June and July, uh, that were up 56% and 34% respectively, um, she was able, uh, to adjust that beginning balance for fiscal year '21 based on, uh, that ending, that favorable ending that was not originally anticipated at budget time in fiscal year '20. Furthermore, um, there was some instances due to COVID-19 where some advertising costs were delayed. Uh, some events that were included in the fiscal year '20 budget were canceled as a result of COVID-19. So all that has contributed, uh, to her being basically able to have a net gain of $28,000 in her, uh, in her revenue line. And again, she's reduced her, um, lodging tax proceeds in, in anticipation of a worst-case scenario, much like we did. But at the same time, as she has had actual information come in related to fiscal year '20, she's been able to offset that. Now, the $28,000 in additional funding, we'd like you to know, uh, that it has not been used for operational contracted services type expenses. Um, what they are, are proposing to do with this funding, uh, they're proposing to, uh, come, as we come out of this COVID-19, uh, they propose to do things like, uh, bolster their advertising and marketing. Um, that was increased by $5,000, their postage for, for mailouts and things like that, promotional materials and, um, as they, every dollar is required, they, they're spending their money, uh, to advertise and, and promote, uh, tourism development. So with that being said, um, I, I am, I have looked over this budget. Uh, Ms. Harbuck and I have discussed it, and I would be, uh, I, I could recommend, uh, this board to approve it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rowland. Um, you, you did really well. That was a lot to get in there, um, of the way things had to switch around. The original budget had to be prepared and to, uh, Mr. Rowland by, uh, the 1st of February. So naturally, I started working on that original budget in December, um, and January. And things were good then as far as, as the, um, norm wa- was going. So I underestimated how much money I would have left at the end of June of 2020 because this budget you're looking at starts in July 1st of 2020. So, um, when I did that original budget, I underestimated what that balance would be because it, I thought we were going to be spending a lot more money between January and June 30th. And, um, we didn't happen to do that because some of the, um, contracts that we had already let back in the end of, um, nine, 2019, um, had to be delayed because some of the publications that we were going in delayed publishing. And, uh, a lot of them delayed billing. As a matter of fact, we're just now getting some of the billing in on some of the publications that we're in, like our state, uh, the North Carolina Travel Guide is, uh, getting ready to, um, come out for '21. And so that bill's a pretty big bill that we'll have coming. So we are, um, very pleased that we had more money than we expected to have at the end of June because I thought it was necessary with that much of a difference that I bring a new budget to y'all. Um, we don't try to hide anything, Mr. Shields is on that committee and he'll answer to you. And Lori will answer that I call her or get in touch with her every time I see something that I'm like unsure of, and she helps me keep everything in line. So we're planning on, I'm not going to say if, I'm going to say when things fully open back up, that we, um, start pushing a little bit harder with some more direct advertising to encourage people to come visit us. And from the looks of the lodging tax, which was a surprise, Lori, to me, how things, how things jumped back, um, March and April were down considerably for us. And that's when I decided I better start looking at that budget because if it continues with that kind of a swing, we're going to be in big trouble by the end of the year. So I looked at, at those figures early on there in March and April, and I can't, I don't see my paper, but I had it down. We were down like 87% one of those months. And it was like, whoa, that's not going to work for us. So anyway, um, that's why I redid the budget. And I tried to be as, as honest and as thorough as I can in trying to figure out what to do, uh, where to go. And the money will stay there. If we don't spend it, I'll report to y'all and the money will carry over for a future year. But I will always report to you and give you a bu, a new budget if we, if we need to do one. Um, yeah, we were down in the month of March, 44%. And in the month of April, we were down 87%. And so then, March, surprisingly, it was only down 11%. And this is just Franklin collections. This doesn't include Highlands, or it doesn't include Idaho. And then, um, surprise, uh, surprise, in June, we came up 85%. Uh, and then in August, uh, I mean, in July, 34, I mean, 56% in June and 34% in July, which was over 80% in those two months. So, um, I don't know about August. Lori hadn't got that to me yet, but, um, and we're on a two, two-month drag. The, the August money comes in, but we don't get the report until, um, October. October, yeah, so. Anyway, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer those. Um, I appreciate y'all entrusting us with taking care of, um, using these funds to, to help advance Macon County. Macon County.
Mr. Chairman, as a TDC member, I'd like to say thank you to Linda for all she does and her leadership group over there at the Chamber of Commerce. You're still working during this time and Macon County appreciates it.
We closed the doors for about two months to the public, but we have a back door. And we continue to go in there and work and keep up with phone calls and keep up with mail and anything like that that we need to do and things like this, being prepared.
I'd like to make a motion that this proposed budget for the Franklin-Nantahala Tourism Development Commission for the fiscal year 2021 be approved.
Motion, my Commissioner Shields. Second. My Commissioner Higginson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all so much.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay, good night.
I'm going to get a motion going. Hopefully, just a very brief closed session for a personnel matter.
First deal, attorney-client privilege. So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Bill.
Thank you.
My Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Then we'll take one.
Test, real.
Everybody agree on that?
No. Your words are poor.
Our meeting back to order. Mr. Manager, will you give us an update on our county attorney situation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my conversation with Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones declined.
Fred Jones.
Yes, Mr. Fred Jones declined the offering and withdrew his name from the discussion. So with that being said, I was able to, Chester and I was able to reach out to our neighboring county of Swain County. And I spoke with the manager and Mr. Jones spoke with the county attorney, Ms. Kim Carpenter. And she would be willing to come in and serve in the interim capacity following Chester's retirement. His last day will be October 31st. So she would come in and that served for no more than 60 days, beginning on, effective November 1st. And she would come in at a rate of $200 per hour. That is the current rate that we compensate our attorney. And Ms. Carpenter comes highly recommended. Chester has worked with her previously. She's been the Swain County Attorney since 1997. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, if the board is so inclined to bring Ms. Kim Carpenter on as interim county attorney, then a motion should be made that reflects that based on these terms.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we employ Attorney Kim Carpenter for the period of not too soon, 60 days, beginning on October 31st, and authorize the county manager to enter into an agreement. Exactly what we're, we have an agreement with our present county attorney.
This would actually be an appointment as opposed to an employment. Little technical difference. And we'd want to authorize county manager to present a contract consistent with these terms to her. And sign it on behalf of her.
Part of that motion, right. Motion back, Commissioner Bill. All, anybody? Somebody want to second?
Oh, I'll second.
Second, my Commissioner Higginson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Chester. Now we can bear she once again. Now that we got a new one lined up.
I'm used to that. Every meeting's that way.
Starts about 6 o'clock, the second Tuesday of the month.
Yeah. Yeah.
We'll step up front and get your picture taken.
All right, Chester, on behalf of Macon County, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Rogers, friend. Thank you, Chester. Here, let me slide this back in that plastic for you.
Okay.
Ronnie, you got that plastic, too?
Yes, sir.
You had one more to pay. It looks good, though.
I don't know about that.
There you go, touch that.
I wrote some more chips of that.
I think they're usually laughing. Just be able to take it up there with you.
Sure.
Picture up, he wasn't even sure. Call us, hey, the fault. Yeah, you got it. Yeah.
All right, old business. Ten, a update on Macon Middle School renovation project. Mr. Manager, presume that's you?
Yes, if you'll recall, Mr. Chairman, I had sent out an email on Friday, October 9th, that outlined this agenda item. And I also have included the revised attachments that were part of that email are laying up there and can be distributed if you want to see them. But to make a, to give you the Cliffs Notes on that, if you'll recall back in December of 2015, prior to moving forward with the construction of the landfill, which was approximately a $9 million project, with the, just the magnitude of that project, we felt that it would be, it would behoove us to adopt a prequalification policy and grading mechanism for us to evaluate the contractors that responded to that request for proposals. As we're coming up on the Macon Middle School renovation project, that's estimated to be about $13 million approximately, we felt like that it was just as important to have this prequalification for the respondent contractors in place for this project as well, similar to what we did in 2015. So with that, we have revised the prequalification policy that was previously adopted as it was tailored to that landfill project. There was some reference to the committee members that would serve on that, on the selection committee. Chris Stahl, who's the landfill director, of course, was on there and it named him as landfill director in that policy. So things like that, just minor changes were made to allow this prequalification policy to fit the Macon Middle School project. So that is included. It would, and the one we would be adopting is, of course, the one that has been distributed here tonight. Also, with this prequalification policy, there comes a grading matrix. In other words, that everything is assigned a point value. And the members of the prequalification committee will go through each contractor. Take one over the pass, just take one passing. The committee members that serve on the prequalification committee, as established in the prequalification policy, will go through with the architect, SGA Narmore Wright, and will rank the responding contractors to the RFP using this grading matrix that you're looking at now. So the committee members, for the county representatives, I would recommend Jack Morgan, Lori Carpenter, Lindsey Leopard, a representative from SGA Narmore Wright, and myself to represent the county on this prequalification committee. And I would also recommend that this board go ahead and approve the appointment of four individuals from the school board, which they will need to appoint at their next meeting. Chester, I don't know if we can do that by name or can we do it by, can we approve four slots to be selected by the school board committee?
I think the latter is the better, better way to do that, is to allow the school board to name those four individuals.
And we can go ahead and approve those four spaces on the committee?
We can approve those and approve inserting those names upon receipt from the Department of Education.
Okay. So that is the prequalification committee. They will be, we elected officials, will not be included on the committee as it is a conflict, because you'll be grading and also choosing who gets the contract. So with that being said, we will also, that's everything with prequalification.
No, you've got one more item.
Right, I've got the plans, the plans.
No, you've got one more item with prequalification. You've got the contractor information form and it has to be specifically.
Yes, the contractor information form, which is also there. And that will be, that is information that will be filled out by the respondent contractors. So would you approve these separately, Chester?
I think I would first approve the amended policy, prequalification policy, with the understanding it takes the place of the existing one. And then, once that's accomplished, I think I would present for approval the proposed members of the committee that will make this decision. That's one change in this policy. Instead of having a new policy every time because we're having to name a new committee, we're just simply saying an appropriate committee will be named at the time of the project. And then, once you've got that, I think you need to approve the matrix and you need to approve the contractor information, prequalification form.
So let's do that one, let's do that.
You get a motion to approve the prequalification policy?
As amended, yes.
As amended.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Higginson. Second, by Commissioner Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the grading?
Prequalification committee.
Prequalification committee.
As a name.
As named.
As named with four.
Four members coming from the chosen local school.
To be filled and chosen by the Department of Education.
We get a motion on that?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Higginson, second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we need a prequalification form and rating matrix?
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, but certainly not least, we need to approve the final plans, which incorporate the scope items that was, that were included in the email that I had sent you. Now, we, the liaison committee and representatives from the school board administration, myself, we reviewed the plans. Chester was there with the architect from SGA Narmore Wright. We reviewed the final plan documents. And in that review, we basically accepted those plans. We reviewed the final plan documents and in that review, we, we basically accepted those plans, but there were some changes that were brought up. Updated security and technology, the final plan documents. What needed to be added to them were the door contract, the door contact monitor capability to all exterior doors that will not have access control installed. And this was a recommendation of Tim Burl, who is their IT director. This would be, this would take place at the exterior doors in the kitchen, storage areas in the, on the gym, as well as exterior doors to basement areas. The updated security finishes in the front desk lobby provide a new countertop at, at the front lobby check-in desk. Salvage and reinstall the newly placed plexiglass screen wall and modify head condition as required. Replacement of lower library flooring area, new carpet to be installed in spaces as part of the base bid package for acoustic purposes. And classroom in one eighteen for Tim Burl, the currently planned twenty-four IT drops can be removed and revise the renovation scope to match other typical classrooms. So what she would be approving, and we will make it part of the minutes, in addition to the final plans, will be those bullet points listed in the email from Mark Seeley to me that was sent on October eighth of 2020.
Need to understand those items he just enumerated are, are very small changes and we're apt to see some more of those as we go through this. The, the plans, though, that were presented, that's the lion's share of this project and will continue to be the lion's share of this project.
Mr. Chairman, as liaison committee, Mitch Shields and I were there, we did ask several questions of them. And see how simple to view the plans and, and pull. I can't say architects. I'm right impressed. I, they, they seem to have the answers. We're very concerned about, of course, HVAC and getting water out of that building. That's the two things, that's the two big things and we're concerned with that. And they have addressed those and so Mitch Shields to speak, speak to it, but it was a good meeting. They seemed to know the answers to our questions and it was open to suggestions that wouldn't cost us money and it was open to some value engineering as we go down with the contractor that's chosen. So that could be, that's certainly saves us a lot of money on these other schools, so.
Get a motion approved. Derek's last comment.
The final, will be the final plans with, the final plans is presented to the liaison committee with the additions that were stated in the email from Mark Seeley to Derek Rowland.
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, motion back commissioner Bill, second back commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Leaving on the new business, Mr. Haven, have a request, welcome.
Good to see you, Dan.
Good to see you guys, thank you.
I was only pulling the mask off to hear me, but I'll stay six feet away from you, all right? I wanted to take a few minutes and I'll make it as quick as possible and come here and address. Gun shows across North Carolina has been, been hilt since June and they are every weekend. We're having record numbers of people that comes out. The attendance at every show we talk to is anywhere from two to seven times what it has been. We will be in Haywood County in two weeks and, let's see, we done Marion three weeks ago?
It was at the end of August.
Okay. Okay, anyway, we dated in the municipal event center in Marion. So anyway, I noticed that you've had the community facilities building closed down and we hadn't really said too much about doing a show here in Franklin, even though we have done a show as close as Clayton and I can't remember exactly the date on it, but we absolutely had a crowd of people. Now, I know that when, I'm trying to pull up something because I'm going to show you this in a minute, the list of all the shows that's across North Carolina. But I know when the pandemic started, there were several things that was deemed as an essential business and gun stores was one of them, along with liquor stores. I know a lot of people fussed about both, but anyway, they were a retail business. Gun shows is a retail business. It's like Ingles or it's like Walmart or whatever, they're selling things retail in there. We're in touch with a lot of vendors from as far away as Texas, Missouri. Let's see, we've got them up in Mississippi, New York, a lot of places coming in. Now, the actual sale of guns can't be done because we've got to be from this state, but we have a lot of accessories coming in. And so we like to try to do a gun show about two months from the time that we advertise it. It's not something I'm asking about getting a show today. But we were hoping that possibly we could get a show maybe by around the first of the year out here at the community facilities building. And speaking about this, I want to pass my laptop around and just let you folks look at. If you don't mind, right here where they're, where they're having shows in North Carolina. But if it be possible, what I'm asking is, is to be able to do a show at the community facilities building by about January. We are required at this time in any of the shows to take people's temperature, which we do. We have to wear a face mask. I think that it's said if you can't keep six feet distance, you must wear a face mask. We have signs that says face mask must be worn. We also furnish sand sanitizer. We put signs out, respect social distancing and we're doing everything to meet in the guidelines. Lately, we have been doing a lot of shows. In fact, in the state of Georgia right now, we probably are putting on two shows to every other promoter's one. We've been doing them as far south as Albany. We, I think that we, we got a big show this weekend in Atlanta. It'll be the third show we've had since June and we're drawing record numbers in them. And I saw Linda here talking about the tourism and what have you. When we have a show, there are not just people from Franklin comes to them. There's a lot of motels full. I talked to a lot of the restaurants that are making a lot of money off of it. Gas stations sell gas. A lot of the ladies maybe don't like what's for sale, so they go to Walmart or some other shop and while it's their husbands this year or after the show or whatever. But in a nutshell, it's basically what I'm asking is if we could have a show at the community facilities building. And I am figuring at least January, because we're booked all the way through the first year.
Yeah, we're pretty much booked. It may be even first part of February before we're able to.
And it may be the dollar restrictions, but then maybe, or even lifted, I hope so. But if, if anybody'd like to ask me any questions about it, I'd love to answer them.
What do you do about your number of people coming in, population?
As far as?
Number of people coming in, as far as how many come in at once or whatever.
What the building will hold, the maximum capacity.
Of course, it depends on location to location. Some, some counties don't have a problem with. For those who don't know me, I'm Todd Carter. Some places don't have a problem with just letting people in, as many as they won't come in at once. Some of them have a limit of how many people can come in, so it just varies depending on the location to location. One of the reasons why, of course, we've had, you know, of course, we started here in Macon County back, if you remember, February two thousand and ten. But the fact is, you know, since the community building's closed, we're doing two shows this fall in Waynesville. And just like Morganton's closed down that building, so we're doing two in Marion this, this fall. You know, being from Macon County, you know, this is money that could be people coming in, buying gas, buying food at restaurants, this could be Macon County's money, so. That's basically what we're asking is just, you know, if we could have a show here in Franklin again. One thing, Mr. Haven, I think forgot was, you know, when we're taking up money, we do have a plexiglass, just like a retail store. So is anything else that we forgot?
Is it still the population of twenty-five inside, fifty outside? Is that what you have to adhere to?
Like I said, it depends on where you go. There are some locations that let as many come in there as the old occupancy numbers. There are some places that, that do have, you know, just like a retail business.
Yeah, I think that twenty and fifty don't apply to retail.
Right.
I think that's mass gather. Derek, hit me out here, Chester.
I'm looking as we speak.
Retail stores are based off square footage or percentage of building occupancy, I think?
I think it's, I think it's a thirty percent. And I think, I, I don't know. And that would be something, you know, that, that we would have to, to see because, you know, Macon County is, in our, what we've done here, this board has taken action and basically our local executive order, our, our local state of emergency is always going to directly reflect. We, it will be no more restringent, no more stringent than what the state is doing. So our local state of emergency directly reflects the, what is contained in the latest governor's executive order that's been issued, so.
I believe your state of emergency, though, would have to be revised to open up that building because I think by its terms, it's closed. I believe.
And we will, we'll have to, that, that will be something we'd have to look at, you know, all those things. And I'd like to consult.
Need to just double check it. We need to talk with the health, the health department and.
So.
It may be all over by the end, we hope. And it may be up forty-seven percent, though, the last week and a half, so. That's not, we don't know, who knows?
Depending on where you're at.
How do y'all deal?
You get with the local officials, health department and those local authorities and you work with them and make sure that, that you're complying with, with the regs that, as I say. Say for example, like, like they had a show, what, a couple of weeks ago at the Asheville, at the exit. They contacted the, it's a state facility, they contacted the state, state had these guidelines, that's what they followed. And just like, we're going to be at a state facility this coming weekend in Georgia State Farmers Market. You know, we've consulted with them, they told us what guidelines to follow, that's what we follow. Of course, it's a different executive order since it's Georgia.
Well, Waynesville, it's a county-run facility, Haywood County.
It's a little strange. It's kind of like, because they've actually changed the name from the Haywood County Fairgrounds to the Smoky Mountain Event Center. So it's kind of like part of it's county-owned, part of it ain't or not. So it's kind of a little bit strange.
My name Todd, how, how are y'all handling the contingency of, heaven forbid, it gets worse between now, time you advertise and then the time for the show? And it's not safe to have the show. How are y'all handling that?
Well, I mean, we've, unfortunately, we've had to cancel the show, you know, way back in March. Everything was shut down, we just had to cancel it. But, you know, we're, we're taking temperatures at the door and stuff like that. And if anybody has a high temperature, we're for not letting it in.
To answer what you just said, when I stated that we tried to put the information out at least two months.
That's what I was concerned about.
Basically, when I book a show, we've got literally about a thousand vendors and I send a bulk email out that I booked that show. So what I'll do is, actually, I own one gun show promotion site nationwide for a lot of different promoters. So we will put this on there, like I was showing you that one that you saw. And my site will look something like this, so when they go to it, they can see the event that I have just sent the email out on. Can you see it all right, Gary? This is our site right here that we sent it out on. Now, we line up our advertisement and basically here's how we do it. We don't send this advertisement out immediately. We will try to get in contact with the billboard companies and we run a lot of ads over TV. We use Sinclair Broadcasting as much as possible, which is same as WLOS is in Asheville. We will line this up and try to hone in the last two weeks and jam it in, get, get it advertised in case something does come up. I mean, it could be that it was not even in the pandemic, something may come up, who knows? I mean, a hurricane could come through and blow a building down and that's happened. Not with us, but it did with my kind of. And so what we do is try our very best to hold the advertising money, have everything cocked and ready and within the last two mi, or two, two weeks before, then we advertise it big time to the public. Now, I've got a cabinet in this computer, I call it, that what we do is many times, we've set up a little raffle here then, and you come in and we'll give away a free box ammunition or something. And what you got to do is fill out a form and put your email address on it. We state that we are doing this to send out an email, so what we do is we'll wait to that last two or three days. This Atlanta show we got starting Saturday and Sunday, I just sent this bulk email out today. And that will let all the people out there notify that we're coming by an email. Sure, we got billboards and, and TV and radio and things like that, too. But by doing this, we try to keep that loss down because it has happened to us several times and sometimes it's some of these bigger shows, you're looking at thousands of dollars. Actually, one billboard on the Atlanta freeway was eighteen hundred dollars for two weeks and we have that. Has it gone up a little bit? I know that there's increases. But anyway, we have like four to six of them on the two eighty-five and around, so. Yes, we've got splattered a couple of times by having to cancel an event where that would really cost us. But if that answers the question, that's what we try to do.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure that y'all had traveled down that road and understood that the county would need for you to assume that risk.
Well, I mean, I would assume also that it would be kind of like a thing that you could kind of see it coming, too. You'd be thinking, well, maybe not need to do that.
Yeah. But anyway, speaking about it, different one, right here is another gun shows USA, that belongs to me. And I advertise for all other vendors that's having shows in multiple states. We, we send this out here and really that right there, free advertisement for us, just, let's see, what is it? Bob's got, says they sweat equity there. But anyway, we try very hard to do it. But anyway, whether you make a decision at this point or if we could keep it in the mind, I'd, I'd love to come back here and do some shows and.
If we give you a decision at our November meeting, give our county manager time, that'd be enough.
It is, it, it's perfectly fine and I appreciate your time of listening to us and the consideration of it. And as I say, we'd probably, I think we've got the first two weeks of January already. Yeah, so it would be the last two weeks of January or even into February. And hopefully, the pandemic will get better and we can get opened up and, and get something going.
I don't have a, a problem with it at all in principle. I, I think as county manager advised, just give our staff, our health director, Seth Adams, recreation director, and Mr. Kay, the chance to give us their feedback on it. Let's just put it under all business at our next, our November meeting.
Okay.
How they'll normally apply to do a show at the community development there?
We called Seth and it's sort of a process where we, there's a lot of vendors that's out here. So what we try to do is, is watch some dates that. So what we try to do is is watch some dates that we're not going to be stepping on somebody's toes that's close by because if we would, we'd run an event for them and ourselves, too, if we do. So we check his dates, and we've usually got some that we will ask, can we do them on this date? And he said, okay, well, we can't on that date, but we got some, but on this one, we have. Once we come up to this date, and he okays the date, we send this out real immediately on this bulk email, and then these other promoters know that we've got this date booked. This way, we're trying to be respectful for each other because it has happened. I saw some vendors where the, I mean, some promoters where they would get too close with shows, and it one would affect.
So you need to date pretty much too much headtime. So if you make, you have to fill out a little application or something to the to.
We basically. Yeah, we did fill out a rental agreement or whatever, but, I mean, basically, it's just trying to find a date that will work with us or vendors and just whatever, what else is going on.
Is it cumbersome to do that preliminary work and say, hey, we want to have a show in January twentieth, whatever the weekend is, and get that down, and maybe let, or you requesting that Derek do some checking with the health department or who?
Yeah, and just get out and warn Seth's recreation.
I mean, we could possibly have, if you're asking, can we come up with a date? We could possibly have that by the next in November.
Okay, so November will give you December and January, the six, maybe six weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We need some, we need to, if you boys are doing it in North Carolina and other places, and other companies are doing it in North Carolina.
Well, in last statement I have about this right now, there's a lot of ammunition companies that are shut down, and the price of ammunition has gone through the ceiling, and people are buying it in loads. If I tell you some of the stories, it's almost unbelievable. We've had people sell over a hundred thousand dollars in one show of ammunition, and gun sales are like crazy. I can't remember what it was, North Georgia Pawn sold in Atlanta.
He sold like three hundred twenty guns.
In one show. I know that he had sixteen tables, and when he left, he had eight guns under his arm. But this is what they're bringing. This show at Clayton, we had people coming from Macon, Georgia. They were coming from Birmingham. They were coming from Memphis, Tennessee area, coming in buying. And those people didn't usually come in and just go right back. A lot of them stayed around here.
Spend their money.
And their tax dollars, or their dollars that they're coming in here spending could help our taxpayers a lot.
We need it.
Friends, I think it's very much missing.
Thank you, man.
Good to see you, Todd. Good to see you.
All right. Item eleven A, proposed lease with Blue Ridge Broadcasting Corporation.
Let me jump on that one. Folks with Sutton Broadcasting and Blue Ridge Broadcasting approached county manager about working out a sublease arrangement. For those of you that don't know, Sutton subleases space on the county's tower, on Cowie Bald, and the county actually leases that space from Forest Service. Sutton has three translators up there, and they want to sell one to Blue Ridge Broadcasting. And they can't really complete that sale unless until they have secured the right to keep the present equipment up there. And in order to do that, basically, the county needs to consent to that arrangement. But for the county to consent to that arrangement, we've got to know that the Forest Service is happy, and we also need to know that the FCC is happy. I have spoken with them and the folks with Sutton and Blue Ridge, and they've indicated that a simple consent from the county would be enough. And my advice to the to the county is that's fine, so long as we get the necessary consent from the Forest Service and the FCC. They they hold the trump cards. I would recommend you authorize county manager upon receipt of appropriate bullheads by the Forest Service and the FCC to consent to a sublease arrangement between Sutton Broadcasting and Blue Ridge Broadcasting as requested of county managers, as opposed to an actual new lease. They had proposed a new lease. I don't think it's a necessary thing, that a simple consent would be enough.
I make a motion to give the county manager that authorization as described by our council.
All right. Motion, my commissioner Bill. Say my commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item eleven B, amendment to the agreement for the Guy Taylor Memorial Scholarship.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a matter of housekeeping as this amendment will be needed to change this fund that was created on September thirteenth, nineteen ninety-nine, established by this government body. It basically is going to change the fund to a designated endowment of the North Carolina Community Foundation in order to comply with the new fund balance requirements of the North Carolina Community Foundation. Essentially, this scholarship is being turned over to the North Carolina Community Foundation.
Motion to approve it, Mr. Chairman. All right. Motion, my commissioner Higdon.
Just one question. The way I read this, it is going to stay the Guy Taylor Memorial Scholarship.
Yes, sir.
That's the name of it.
Yes, sir.
Say my commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item eleven C, draft lease for use of the Smoky Mountain Center for the Performing Arts as an alternative jury trial site.
Gentlemen, in your agenda package, you have that proposed lease. Thanks to the great company that owns the Smoky Mountain Performing Centers of the Arts, they have worked very closely with the county to provide the alternate jury trial location, which is necessitated by this COVID nineteen problem that we're experiencing. In short, the state Supreme Court Chief Justice Ms. Beasley mandated that each district within the state of North Carolina, the district district, come up with an alternate plan if the courthouse in a given county was not sufficiently large to accommodate a jury pool and a and the attendance at a jury trial. It was determined by our Superior Court Judge that there was not room in this courthouse. They went out and looked at potential locations. The great company offered the Performing Arts Center, which is really just perfect. It's got all kinds of room in it. It's ideal for for this situation. And they offered it at a, just an incredible rate of three hundred dollars a day. The only thing that we're going to have to pick up in addition to that would be some additional insurance. In order to meet the insurance requirements, we've been working with Kyle Garner at the Weyer Group, and he's indicated that we've got to get a a little rider on our policy that it will cost about a thousand dollars. Laurie, I don't know whether we're going to need a budget amendment for that or not, but I think that's something that could probably be paid for without CARES Act money because it's necessitated by the COVID. The, if you'll see, it is a, the lease period goes from now until, I think, the first of May. However, there's only going to be like three or four weeks in there where we're actually going to have jury trials. So it's not going to be a tremendous expense. It's a great service, though, from the great folks to the county.
And I noticed in the lease that it's not to exceed six thousand dollars. Chester mentioned CARES Act money, but CARES Act money is for expenditures through December thirtieth, and then it's cut off. So my recommendation would just be appropriate the six thousand dollars from contingency. A thousand dollars for the additional insurance, I've got it in the budget. I could move around. But if y'all could just appropriate the six thousand dollars to cover the rental out of contingency, that would be great.
We get a motion to approve the rental agreement and the alternative jury trial site.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, my commissioner Higdon. Say my commissioner Shields, all in favor? And that includes the seven thousand coming from contingency.
Six thousand.
Six thousand, okay.
Yeah, I could cover the thousand, but just the six thousand.
Do you want to go ahead and move eleven eight since we're discussing this up?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
In connection with this lease, and really what is driving this lease, is the alternate jury trial plan for Macon County that was, I think, drafted and put together by our chief, our Superior Court Judge, Judge Coward, our clerk of court. I think the sheriff's worked on it. Been a number of people have worked on it. I've given you a copy of that plan. I I actually received that today. I have looked at it. The main thing that affects us is the insurance requirements, and I've checked with Kyle Garner, and he says we're covered.
We get a motion to approve.
So please, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, my commissioner Bill. Say my commissioner Shields, all in favor? Item eleven D, Housing Department, resolution declaring certain property surplus.
That would be me. So in working with John Fay at the Housing Department, back in twenty thirteen, they were given, it's two thousand eight, I believe it is, sorry, I left that page. Yeah, this two thousand eight Ford Ranger truck through the weatherization program. And so now, this resolution will declare that truck surplus. And then, of course, the second, I'll go ahead and talk about the second one if that's okay, which is part of item D here. And then the second one would be a resolution which would make a donation of that two thousand eight Ford truck to the Central Piedmont Community Action, Inc., which is a nonprofit. And Ernie Hogston, with the North Carolina Weatherization Program, has approved this transfer because, again, this this was given to us in twenty thirteen from the weatherization program. And in return, not really an action item for this agenda, but just for your information, the Housing Department will be receiving a four-wheel-drive Nissan Frontier truck, which, of course, they desperately need to get around better in in working with the, you know, the residents here in Macon County.
Can you get a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Motion, my commissioner Shields.
Both at once, Laurie.
It's too light.
Say my commissioner Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item eleven E, free flu shots for uninsured individuals.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If you look in your email, you have a memo here from the Health Director Kathy McGahab. This memo basically cites the the flu shot is getting more important because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Cites that that could reduce the burden on the healthcare system and save the medical resources for COVID nineteen patients. She also cites here that primary care physicians, pharmacies, and Macon County Public Health are work, are working to vaccinate as many residents as we can. She is recommending, in lieu of that, that the Board of Commissioners appropriate funding necessary to provide flu shots for free to any person living or working in Macon County that is under, that is uninsured. The breakdown here, as you can see, based on what she has saw from twenty nineteen, the fees for the anticipated number of uninsured people who would be getting flu shots for twenty twenty, she would estimate that to be around eighty-nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars, as she has stated here in this proposal.
So eighty-nine people for a total of a hundred and twenty-eight dollars?
No. It will be eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and that is estimated. She is estimating a hundred and twenty-four individuals.
Two hundred and forty-eight.
Two hundred and forty-eight individuals at thirty-six dollars a person. And.
I think.
Go about.
Go ahead. I think we're marking it right.
Have they gone about knowing if they got insurance or not?
Because i- if they go, if you go to the health department, you have insurance, you submit your insurance, just like.
Why don't you qualify and skip that?
Just say, I don't have no insurance.
I would assume if they don't catch you, you just got away with it. Got away with it. But I I think there certainly is a mechanism in place. They have a, they do have a database over there that that keeps track of that stuff for the people that visit.
And you said, if I understood it right, you said, with county residents and non-county residents that are working here.
Yes, recommending providing free flu shots to any person living or working in Macon County.
I think it's a great idea, but I don't see how logistics. Oh, what do you think? I mean, you're.
You had a good point.
I mean, that.
I think if we can vaccinate, I think we really need to get the vaccination in for those people who saved it.
And for eighty, eighty-nine hundred dollars, that's.
Well, and that, can that, is that something CARES Act could be useful?
I don't think so. I think they'll be stretching it because it's a flu vaccine.
We could use our local.
Yeah, we could use our local funds.
That we, the hundred and fifty thousand that we appropriated in March that carried forward because, you know, whether whether or not we want to sort it out with the CARES Act money, I think it's related to COVID enough that our local money that was appropriated if the board's off it.
If you can do that, Derek, if you would, would you agree that that we would say not to exceed ten thousand dollars in total cost?
Yes.
I mean, that's the only way I know you could, I think you can line them up.
Oh, yeah.
I got mine today.
It's worth the board to help discuss this when they get it.
I'll do it for last meeting. I have to make the last meeting.
But I agree with Paul. It's probably the most important year. I mean, you know, we can appropriate X amount of dollars, and if you, if that ain't enough, Derek, you know, it's coming back, I guess.
I think it probably would be wise to ask Kathy to get the blessing of the board, poll them or otherwise. Not this board, the health board.
And this, if if it was approved here, it would be contingent.
Yeah.
On that, that approval.
She may have already done that.
I'll make a motion that that we approve the the free flu shot for those who do not have insurance with a total not to exceed ten thousand dollars. And that's contingent on the, on health board approval.
Motion, my commissioner Bill. Say my commissioner Shields.
And that's out of fund, out of the, of existing funds.
Yeah, existing funds.
All right.
What's the balance of that?
It's going to be close.
The existing funds, y'all appropriated a hundred and fifty thousand last year, and we had spent about a hundred and ten thousand of it roughly, but I was able to reclass that and took it out of our CARES Act money. So you only spent two hundred ninety-two dollars out of last year's hundred and fifty thousand.
Don't let, don't let no deal know that.
But at the time that I rolled forward the budget, I only rolled forward forty-one thousand, six thirty-six.
It's good use of that.
Because at the time, you know, we had spent almost the one-ten, so forty-one, six thirty-six is currently budgeted for local COVID funds.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item eleven F, contract documents for hospice house.
As you'll remember, the Department of Commerce awarded a grant to Hospice House Foundation of WNC, Inc., here in Franklin. We had worked with them. I think the grant amount was seventy thousand dollars. Is that right?
Yes.
And our part, I believe, was five percent.
Thirty-five hundred, yeah.
Thirty-five hundred. Long and short, in order for that to happen at this point, there is a big stack of papers that have to be approved by this board and have to be signed by Jim Tate. There's some blanks that have got to be filled in on those documents. I would recommend that, in order to move forward with this grant, that the board approve the grant agreement and all of the attachments there, too, and authorize your chairman to sign and fill in the remaining blanks. There is one blank in there that I feel like we do need to discuss, though, before it gets filled in. There's a choice to either secure the the callback or the promissory note from this hospice house organization to the county to either secure it or not secure it with a deed of trust. I can tell you from talking with Tommy Jenkins, he said that all of our commerce grants, we've not secured any of them with deed of trust. we've not secured any of them with deed of trust so far. And, but it's a call that y'all need to make as opposed to just filling it in without having some discussion. I don't see a problem in this particular situation of, of not getting a deed of trust because my understanding is they're, they're building this basically with money that they've raised. And if there's a problem, it should be a pretty good asset to chase if we need to.
We get a motion to approve the same, the presented funds, kind of a contingency.
Well, that was, yeah, my next, I was gonna, I was gonna interject there. We need a budget amendment for seventy-three thousand five hundred total. Of course, seventy thousand would be grant funds, the other thirty-five hundred will be our match.
To reverse.
Out of contingency or fund balance, whichever you choose.
Mr. Chairman, need for, to corral you before you leave and get those signed and filled in.
Yes.
Just FYI, if you're.
Get a motion for the budget amendment and the approval. With or without a deed of trust.
And from contingency or fund balance. You've got eighty-six thousand in contingency.
So, I'll make a motion that we'll do exactly what our finance director said, and there will be no deed of trust required. And give enough, prove the chairman to sign whatever he needs to sign.
Motion my Commissioner Bill, same my Commissioner Higdon, all in favor?
Aye.
For the record, Mike, from contingency, the thirty-five hundred.
For the record, it's a big stack of documents. All right, I think that's it.
CARES Act.
Appropriation out of CARES Act funding for the.
And again, this is the local, this would be the local CARES Act funding simply because we wouldn't, you know, with the, there are certain strings tied to the CARES Act money that are, that are very specific. And this local money, as you'll recall, we were appropriated to handle COVID-related needs on a local level that may or may not be covered under the CARES Act funding. The Macon County Fair Association, you know, the facilities there are available for emergency use. And in times like these, we see things such as drive-through clinics. And also, we have been using this facility as an emergency food distribution site for, for manna during this time. And this was, the food bank was previously held at local public school locations, but this had to be relocated once schools went back into session. So, it is being used during this pandemic to meet our local need within our community. However, as you know, the fair this year was very scaled, that wasn't basically the livestock shows that were live-streamed. That's the primary source of revenue for the Macon County Fair Association. So, in order to keep those buildings open that the food bank is operating out of, that potentially be used for drive-through clinics, we need to be sure that things such as the electricity bill, the sewer bill, the water bill, the insurance that is due on a monthly basis can continue, or the insurance due on an annual basis can continue to be paid throughout this pandemic so we can continue to use this site. Based on the figures we have received, the electricity, sewer, water, and insurance for a period of five months, October 2020 through February 2021, would total eight thousand two hundred and ten dollars. And again, that is the cost representative to keep that facility up and running so we can continue to use it to meet this local need. And with that being said, I would, if the board sees it so fit to approve that amount, eight thousand two hundred and ten, to go towards those things out of our local CARES Act appropriation.
I presume the town of Franklin will help us.
But just on behalf of Commissioner Gleskin and myself, we both sit on that board. The fair, we, it basically runs from year to year because of the Macon County Fair. And to give you an idea, over twenty-two thousand pounds of food have been distributed from manna through MPP at that, at the firegrounds since all this pandemic started. So, I don't think that negates, Gleskin and I have been voting on this, but this is, there's no other place. We tried it two different other places to distribute this food, and it just did not work. We tried the old Kmart, it didn't work. Too much traffic. You won't believe the traffic. So, I don't want to make that motion, but we certainly would support that motion as well.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, on that thing.
Motion my Commissioner Higdon, same my Commissioner Shills, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda. You get a motion to approve all unless somebody would like something removed.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion my Commissioner Bill, same my Commissioner Shills, all in favor?
Aye.
No appointments, to my knowledge. I do believe we have reason for a closed session. Motion to go into a closed session for Attorney Clapton, five West Main Street, Franklin, Chester, or Derek. Are we expecting any action?
Well, I think there may also be a need for purpose of discussion of possible acquisition of property as well. Anything else that's closed session, are we getting other than that?
Are we expecting any action?
Possibly, sir.
I, I think there's possibility of it, but I can't.
Sorry, guys.
Can't read this, boy, can you? I've caught my breath.
Your last chance.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll get, that's covered.
You get a second? You need one, Jimmy, or you got it?
No, I'm sorry. Who, who was it? I made a motion. Bill, same my Commissioner Higdon, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Got a motion by Commissioner Beal.